I mean, not V, the in V, I'm sorry.
I think that's how most people feel before they come to these meetings. Call to order the New Kent County Board of Supervisors, March 30th, 2022, meeting to order. Ms. Watkins, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Here.
Mr. Tiller?
Here.
Ms. Page? Mr. Steers?
Here.
And Mr. Lockwood?
Here.
Before we get started this morning, as you can see, we're missing one of our board members. Ms. Page is in the hospital. I'm asking that everyone keep her in your thoughts and prayers. She's dealing with some medical issues and hopefully they'll be able to take care of them and she'll be back with us soon. So just keep her in your thoughts and prayers. She really needs them right now. Item one. Co-sponsor sports leagues, Jason Baldwin.
Just to give you an update, currently we have two co-sponsored groups in the county. This includes New Kent Youth Association Baseball and the New Kent Falcons Football. Football has about 125 participants and baseball has about 300 participants currently. Both groups currently pay an $8 per child fee as a co-sponsorship fee to the county. Consideration was given to raise the fee back in 2020 to start on in July 1 of 2021. But due to COVID impacts, it was not raised and the co-sponsorship fee has not increased in close to eight years currently. After discussion at our January 26 Commission meeting, members approved the recommendation to raise the price per player to $16. This additional amount would help offset field maintenance and unforeseen projects or damages that occur to fields and the parks and facilities. In addition, if the board does decide to raise this fee, our department recommends to not charge the New Kent Falcons for this fall due to they have already completed their registration and did not budget for the increase.
All right, so this would go into effect?
It would go into effect July 1, but like I said, recommend not to charge the Falcons for this fall. So it's actually, we want to start charging until next spring baseball season.
Anybody having issues with that?
That was a recommendation that was given by the commission. And like I said, we have not increased in probably close to eight years.
It's going to help offset some of the new, it costs a lot more to operate and maintain that new park.
Are most of the kids that are in these programs New Kent residents?
A majority of mostly New Kent Youth Association Baseball is under our co-sponsored agreement. We do have in there that they need to maintain an 80% resident versus non-resident. If they go over that 20% non-resident, we actually charge even more per non-resident if that occurrence happens.
And there are programs where, grant programs where you can get assistance and all?
Yes.
And if you have multiple kids is?
I believe football does do and baseball does some type of discount for multi-child discounts. Since they are a co-sponsor group with us as well, if somebody has monetary troubles to pay the fee, we do have a scholarship program that is provided through a, you know, we sell banner spots on fence lines, things like that. But scholarships are only available for residents, not non-residents.
Of course, Ms. Tiller?
How much of the sponsorships for the banners on there?
Currently, if it's a new banner, it's $300 and then every year going forward, if they want to renew it, it's $200.
I think it'd be helpful, what's the, what does the Youth Association charge a kid to play baseball?
They, right now, New Kent Youth Association Baseball charges 150 per child. New Kent Falcons on their early bird is 175, then I believe it goes all the way up to 250 or 225 for a football, 250 for a cheerleader. So it is, and currently we charge for our basketball season, $80 and then soccer, 65 is what we're charging. Per child. Per child.
And New Kent gets none of that?
I'm sorry?
New Kent gets none of that funding? That money?
Well, this money, the registration fees for the youth groups, no, they do not.
Yeah. So I think $16 and being at the Parks and Rec Commission, being on that board, advisory board, I mean, they were 100% supporting us. All right, anybody have anything? What do you need from us, just to?
We would, we would just, it would have to be changed in the fee ordinance along with in our co-sponsorship agreement. We would have to change that.
During the budget process?
Yes, we do have a prepared motion for you in your packet which would allow us and authorize us to amend the co-sponsor agreement document that would have to be signed by both parties. We could wait, since we are talking next season, and take this on when we take the budget on as well. Because you will also have to change your fee schedule in our ordinance. Let me verify real quick that it is in our ordinance.
I mean, I don't want to sit here for 30 minutes talking about $8, so we're gonna do something, we're not.
Actually, under the Parks and Rec fee, this is not in your ordinance. This particular fee is not in your ordinance, so therefore we'll only need to amend the agreement which would require action from the board and the motion is in your packet.
Are you okay with that? Said the board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If there are no other questions or concerns, I move to adopt the increase of the co-sponsored group fee to $16 per player effective July 1, 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Tiller. Ms. Watkins, we poll the members.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page? Mr. Steers?
Nay.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
All right, thank you.
Next item, Representative, Community College President. RCC President, Kenneth B. Rockland.
Sorry.
I've got a PowerPoint, but I printed it for you, too.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for allowing me. Thank you. Thank you so much for allowing me to come and talk to you a little bit about RCC. We did talk in September, so I didn't repeat a lot of that information, but I do have a few new things to share with you and then we'll talk about our budget requests. So if we could go to the next slide, please? I'll either do that. I can do this all by myself. So I just, this was important to me is to see where we are with enrollment. Now, this is credit enrollment and I'm going to really make a distinction because if you've read anything about the community college system lately, I need to point out some differences in what has been broadcasted and printed as to what it really is. So credit enrollment is college credit. We charge $160.65 a credit hour, that is tuition and fees. The state board has not voted at this time yet on setting tuition, but we're hopeful they will keep it flat. We have not raised our fees since I have been at RCC, so we're hopeful we'll keep that steady. But this is a headcount by residents in the credit programs. So when I was here in the fall, the last I told you, you were fourth as far as the 12 counties we serve and New Kent is now third. A little bit about what we're doing here. We have, and I hadn't shared with this with you, but we, the first room, when you walk in, that front door to the right, we have equipped as a Zoom room and spent 40, over $47,000 of our funds to equip that, which of course you are more than welcome to use at any time, as long as we don't have class in there. I did mention to you, we now have a high school navigator at New Kent who's there four days a week, which is working with students to not only take dual enrollment, but to graduate and come to RCC for whatever program. We do not prioritize that credit enrollment work versus those short-term credentials, although we are funded much, at a much higher rate for the credit. But that's not our philosophy and that's been a big change. So we're excited to see the work of that navigator, this is the first year. And their goal is to really get to those students who otherwise wouldn't go at all, so that we can improve that. We also pay some annual expenses for the space that we utilize, housekeeping and internet, for example, as well. We've been paying our share of the utilities. The signage, the building, which you do not have signed there yet because it has been ordered and everything was in production and the company declared bankruptcy. So we've had to step back and so we're getting there. But the sign at the road, I hope you've noticed, has been replaced. That was at a cost of just $2,800. That indicates it's Rappahannock Community College and Bridging Communities and we did not pass on any cost to Bridging Communities for that. A couple of new things as well, we did receive a grant, it's, the acronym is AREPO. It's Institutional Resilience and Expanded Post-Secondary Opportunity. It was a $1.5 million grant, but some of the funds in there were to, a lot of this was to support dual enrollment. And we have funds for teachers to earn the credentials to teach dual enrollment. And so if it's a transfer class, English, history, math, biology, you have to have a master's degree in the field or a master's degree with at least 18 credit hours in the field. And so we're paying for two of the New Kent faculty to get credentialed in psychology and biology and that was over $16,000 that we've committed to do that. And they're not our employees, they're the New Kent High School employees. We also received a Claude Moore Foundation grant. This is a five-year grant. We apply each year. We completed our first year, we've almost, and we've applied for the second year of funding. Bridging Communities was in the first year to get funding to help equip a lab for practical nursing. That was 48,480, so we're essentially passed through. That is the funding that helps Bridging Communities. New Kent High School will be implementing EMS in the 23, 24 school year. They've gotten funding over two years, which is $84,000 total, which is the highest amount of any of the school divisions that we're working with and it's Bridging Communities, the Northern Neck Tech Center, King George, Gloucester, New Kent and King William. And New Kent is receiving the largest amount of funding for that. I've shared this with you before, we do have scholarships. We actually have a scholarship that was given annually by a couple from New Kent and they have permanently endowed that scholarship and that only goes to a New Kent resident. Again, you already know all about the welding. We are working, spending lots of time back and forth with our architect and engineer, as is Justin. Thank you, Justin. I don't think we go a week without communication, but we're hopeful that is moving along. This is, just wanted to talk about where we are again, if you've read anything about the drop in enrollment in Virginia, which is accurate and it is accurate at RCC. But part of that is because of the shift that, and the emphasis we've put on those credential programs, which are not included in the enrollment numbers you see, when you see a drop. But there were only two colleges this spring compared to last spring that had a positive growth. Ours is not much, but there were only two and we were one of those colleges. Our workforce, the credential programs, again, which for us is welding, CDL, those type of programs, we are up 76% over last spring. Now, last spring was pretty dismal because of the pandemic, but we are still up 22% from 2019 pre-pandemic rates. So we are stabilizing and actually in certain areas growing. We have added a solar installation program, which I had shared a couple of weeks ago with Mr. Hathaway. We've offered one class, there is one, nope, there was one last weekend, so there was two. And then one in April will be in Warsaw, but we will be bringing that to the Glenn's campus as well, which would be convenient. It is a mobile classroom and a individual can come, they can do their OSHA certification online and spend a Saturday and Sunday in training. There's no test, they're certified and can get a job with installing the solar panels. We have been asked to add a sonography program and we are awaiting the final budget from the General Assembly. There was an amendment in there to help fund that. It's a very costly program and that would be at Warsaw and at Glenn's. And those are great jobs. You can get the two-year sonography degree and then add on certificates like ultrasound, echocardiogram and that kind of thing. We're looking at expanding our diesel program and of course, the welding, as you know. Our budget request is, our annual budget request is $5,200. That's, we've been level, asking for level funding for several years. I did want to point out, I think back originally, the formula they used to decide what we ask of each county was based on the students, the number of students from that county that we were serving. New Kent is the lowest of the 12 counties and clearly not the lowest of the 12 counties in the number of citizens we serve now. Gloucester's the highest of the requests, but our request is $5,200. I did want to point out, we have asked in the past and I am asking now for you to consider waiving the rent for the facility we currently occupy. But beginning February 1st, the Go Virginia Grant, we've written that in to help start up, will be paying for the additional 4,000 square feet for welding, so we'll be, the county will be billing for that and then we will be getting reimbursed through the Go Virginia Grant for up to the first $75,000. So I'm not asking that that be waived, but I'm asking you to consider waiving the rent for, it's the 65,415-ish. So we do continue to pay utilities, as I mentioned, and we're very grateful for the partnership. I will say that I know that we are not utilizing the facility to the best of our advantage, but we're not utilizing any of our facilities and we're working on that. We will be, I will start negotiations with an architecture firm for a comprehensive plan that looks at utilization and potential growth in all our campuses and sites, so that we can improve what we offer to meet the citizens' needs. So we will be looking at what more we will be able to do with the area we have in New Kent. And so we are going back retro actively on the rent because we realized we missed a step in there and apologize for that. But new president, new VP of Finance, so I apologize for that, so. Any questions? That's it.
Well, thank you. Anybody have any questions? Your CDL school, is that in, is that Glenn's?
No, we offer it both at Glenn's and Warsaw and we are looking at expanding right now. We had lost our CDL instructor and have posted that position, which might be closed now and we know we have a qualified applicant. So we will be back in business there and we are purchasing a new, another truck so that we can do more. But we're in a year and a half lead time to have a truck. There is that much demand to build those. So then we're talking like $130,000. Yeah. So.
But do you have many people applying for that?
Yes.
Well, good.
We do, yeah, unfortunately, when our instructor left, it was pretty sudden and we'd had a class scheduled. And it's four weeks, it's going to be five weeks to complete that class, which is pretty quick for an immediate job, but folks have to quit their jobs and we had to work. Our folks were incredible to work to find those students another opportunity because they had already committed. So we want to be back on track because it is an excellent program.
Well, I think you do, your program and your school provides a lot to our citizens of the county for well-ranging of children. You've got the diesel, you've got the welding, then you've got the dual enrollment, so I mean, it covers it all. So I do think you provide a great service for our kids and I don't have any problem waiving the rent again, so.
And do we need to ask for the specific years?
Will amend the lease agreement to state that the rent is waived?
And what is it, the amount of the rent that's being waived?
The annual amount is 65,000.
400 something. Yeah.
450.
Okay.
I was right.
So aren't we, so in essence, aren't we actually the highest contributor, not the lowest?
Absolutely, and that's why I wanted to point out, thank you for saying that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, so it is absolutely true.
Thank you. I think they do provide a great service to the community and I'm fine with waiving the rent as well.
Will you make a motion on that?
Yeah.
Well, I'm just listening to attorney.
I think a motion would be in order.
Okay.
And just for clarity, what we're waiving is the 2021 and 2022.
I'm asking for 2023 as well.
And 2023 rent payments.
I'm looking at five minutes, is that correct?
Well, that's last year, but they're also asking for this current year and for next year as well.
Yes, not the additional 4,000, no.
So all three?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we waive the rent for Rappahannock Community College for the years of 2021, 2022 and 2023.
Thank you, Ms. Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, we poll the members.
Ms. Page?
Just for clarification, that's the base rent, not the additional rent that we're getting as part of the Go Grant for the new welding center. Just to clarify for the record, thank you.
Lawyers.
Should I include that in the motion that it is base rent? Ms. Page, Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Next item, the Historic Commission, Ms. Martin?
Good morning.
Can you click your button, please, Ms. Martin?
Okay, the commission has asked me to come and speak to you concerning the letter that we sent, which I think you got last week. We just, because of the situation that Jeff Ellett was able to. We just, because of the situation that that Jeff Ellett was able to investigate, we are concerned that we no longer receive information about things, areas that are being developed. When I first came on this board back, I think in two thousand eight, we used to get notification that such and such an area was going to be developed. Did we know, as the commission, did we know anything that should be preserved in that area? Or were the the people who were developing it, were they going to destroy anything of that historic value? We haven't gotten that in a long time, and we wouldn't have known, we wouldn't have run across this, except for Jeff decided to go a different way to Mechanicsville one day. He knew about the, that were union trenches. But as he passed the the area where they where they are located, he noticed that there was new development, and that's what kind of rang a bell for him. You know, why hadn't we been notified? So we discussed this at our last meeting, and the result of that was this letter to you all. And all we want is, we would like to go back to the way it was before any of you sat on the board and give us notification that something, some particular area is being developed, and the different members of our committee or commission have different knowledges in different, different parts of the county, okay? And so we can investigate it and make sure there isn't something that needs to be preserved. And that basically, that's all we're asking, is to go back to the way it was back when I first came on the board.
I think, well, I was on the, I was here in two thousand eight.
Yeah, but most of you are.
But I did, but I think you'd be surprised. You know how many developers have been approved since two thousand eight?
Oh, yeah, quite a few. And we used to, none?
None.
But they're, they've developed.
Farms of New Kent, I mean, they just had to come in front of this board since two thousand eight. I mean, people are shocked by that fact. I mean, the Autozone, I mean, that's something that that we had approved, but they they had a huge historical study that was done by, who who did that? Trey Braden?
Well, they were the engineers. I'm not sure the subcontractor they.
But they hired, but people are amazed by like Farms of New Kent, Brookshire, all this stuff's being built out, and then these cluster subdivisions that are being built around the county, they don't come in front of front of us. I mean, that's what you see.
Why, why, I don't understand why they don't come in front of you.
Because state code requires that in our ordinance, we have a by right subdivision ordinance in the cluster, and therefore, state code, you know, we're a Dillon Rule state, so we have to have that in our ordinance. So they have the by right use to build those subdivisions. We are looking into that ordinance now to try to tighten it up.
So you're saying that if Joe Blow owns all this property and he wants to build a thousand homes, he can?
Well, he's got to put half of it. There's more, there's more to it than that.
Okay.
But you know, he's got to put half of it in conservation, and but without getting into it right now.
Ms. Chair, doesn't, doesn't that still go before Planning Commission, though?
Clusters do not.
Do not. Who do they go to first in the county?
Planning.
It's an administrative process, attended by planning for the cluster subdivision. I guess, just so I can understand the the request that's being made, is it site plans that you're interested in being part of the review process, which is fine. We can, we can definitely accommodate that in major subdivisions, and I think we have a definition of major subdivisions in our ordinance. Whether or not it goes before the board or Planning Commission, if it's more than a certain number of lots, it's defined as a major subdivision. And I don't see an issue with us forwarding those plaits to the Historic Commission to to review. We'll need to get together offline to to work out a process, who to give that information to, but.
There has been some commercial development that, yeah, I think Ms. Hathaway is correct on that, that we can get you that information. But as far as the subdivisions, I just kind of throw that fact out there because people, it's hard to realize that.
We only know what we see.
Right. But still, there's some of the commercial side that has to come in front of us.
But but the bottom line is, we would like to protect what what historic things that we do have.
Right.
And that that's the bottom line.
I I I I do want to caution you, though. I mean, we can give you copies of the plans to review, and we welcome your comments. But as far as you going on the site to investigate or what you think might be there or what could potentially be there, you will need permission from the property owner to go into the site.
Right now, we're investigating a Mr. Harris, with Mr. Harris's permission, an area that he believes was an old family gravesite. And he's never been able to find it, but he's got, you know, things that passed down through his family. He says, you're welcome to come and see. And so we're looking into that, and that's down off sixty somewhere.
I just wanted to add, you know, I'm on, I'm the board representative for that commission, and I think the the biggest part of that discussion that we had was, you know, we understand that it's somebody else's property, and they have a right to do what they want on their property. And if there is something of historical significance that, you know, part of that conservation part may be to identify it, and maybe that could be part of the conservation part, or or just to acknowledge the history that may have occurred there. So it's it's more a matter of, you know, not losing sight of of the history that occurred on a certain piece of property and being able to recognize where and when. So I think that that's the biggest part of what they're trying to accomplish, is not so much to stop development, but maybe steer it in a different direction if possible, so. Yeah, and definitely with the owner's permission. We we learn.
On a side note, Mr. Harris, I know he had a lot of history in Jim Harris. What, do you know what happened to any of his?
No, it's not, this is not Jim Harris.
Yeah, but I'm just wondering, you know Jim.
Yeah.
Oh, passed away in a car accident, but.
Right.
Did his family, did they, did they pass any of his books or any of his knowledge down that you that you're aware of?
No, not that we know of.
He had a lot of history knowledge of of the county.
And we, we're in touch with Strand's brother, because Strand had a lot of things too. He jokingly said that he was leaving it to me, and I could come clean his house out, but, you know. Well, thanks, guys.
Thanks, Ms. Martin. Next item is Colonial Downs EMS service contract. Chief Opet.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hathaway, staff.
Morning.
All right, in your package, you all should have the updated contract that was vetted through Mr. Hefty. If you remember, the contract was one year with two option years. And this would be to exercise an option year. However, when we send it over to Colonial Downs, they send it back with a new one year with two new option years. So they extended the the years of the contract, and that was their doing. The only changes that we had here are pretty much in the back section of the contract, which is the dates and times that we need to arrive there. Nothing, no big major changes for us that we were used to there. So that is the real changes, and then they've changed their name a couple of times, and they've changed it back to, what did they change it back to? Penins- Peninsula. So I don't know if there's going to be another modification here in the future, or they're just going to worry about that next year. So it's still under Peninsula Pacific Entertainment, so. That is that. I have no issues with going forward this year. We're actually all staffed out for, what we have is twenty-seven race days that we would provide two ambulances for, two staffed ambulances for, as well as on race days, we staff the little UTV that runs around the track. That's all in there. And then we do sixty-five trainings. We send two ambulances every morning at five, I think it's five AM, and they run to ten AM, and we do the trainings every day until race and seizing is over. So that's sixty-five times that we're over there. So that is kind of the contract discussion. Again, no real changes to that moving forward.
Okay. Anybody got any questions? All right, we're good with that.
Just one comment. Thank you both for rendering aid to Ms. Page at our budget meeting. That was very kind of you. Thank you very much.
Anything else?
That's all we have. So to move forward with signing the contract.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There are a motion to approve.
Ms. Tiller?
Any other questions?
You don't need to prove, I don't, you need to prove it? It needs, you need a motion, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move to enter into an agreement with Colonial Downs Group LLC to provide EMS services during the horse racing season.
Thank you, Ms. Tiller. Ms. Watkins, we poll the members?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page? And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Thank you. I'll take a three-minute break. I'll get a cup of coffee. Andre, you all coming to New Kent today? Okay. Oh, it's pretty good. I like the weather as well. Okay. She's good. She's running today.
How you feeling about shit?
I'm good.
It's about that cool breeze and stuff like that.
Oh, yeah. It's good that you get the opportunity to work with teams that they want to work with.
She's running solid as well.
Yeah.
We're not going to beat them.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
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 Call meeting back to order. Uh, item five is gonna be pulled, so we'll move to item six. Jesse Robinson with Borrego Solar.
That place down. Hard copy score down.
It's up on top. Right there, Thomas, on top.
Hey, thanks for your time.
Good morning.
Yeah, morning. My name's Jessie. Like you said, I'm the project developer with Borrego Solar. And here with me is Andy Kavanaugh, our civil engineer. And, um, I really just wanted to come in front of y'all today to give an introduction to distributed generation solar. I think a larger project has come to the county before, but our size project is, I believe, new to y'all. And, um, just wanted it to be an opportunity, like, we have slides, but y'all can ask us questions and give feedback on the project where, I think we're going in front of y'all in May for. We went to the planning commission a few weeks ago and got approved, but we just wanna use this as like a informal question and answer session, so. Oops. Okay, thanks. So just briefly about Borrego. It's a family-founded company formed in the 1980s by a couple brothers. So we've been developing solar for about forty years and have built over nine hundred megawatts of solar across the country, mostly in California, New York, Massachusetts, Illinois, and now Virginia. And you may be familiar with the Virginia Clean Economy Act, which passed in April of 2020, and calls for Dominion to acquire over a thousand megawatts of small-scale projects, three megawatts or less, by 2035. So this is a project in response to that mandate from the state. Um, and I just wanted to give a breakdown of what different solar projects exist, because there are different types of projects. And like I mentioned before, the twenty-megawatt project that came to y'all, I think, would fall under, like, utility scale. It's a large-scale project, um, a couple hundred acres. There's also community solar in Virginia. That's where you can, um, build it, and then people can subscribe to the program and get, like, subscriptions, um, for solar. This project, um, that we will be coming to y'all later about would be with Dominion, the Dominion RFP. So it's capped at three megawatts, um, and would feed directly into the electricity grid. And, um, just to distinguish distributed generation and utility scale, distributed, we interconnect to the distribution lines that you'll find, like, along the road. They're smaller voltage. They go to a substation. Um, utility scale, you interconnect to a transmission line that can run for miles, higher voltage. Utility scale projects need, like, a substation onsite for the project. Distributed generation, there's no such, um, substation. And then, like, utility scale, they need forty megawatts, I mean, sorry, forty acres minimum, but usually it's a couple hundred. Um, distributed generation, it's forty or less, usually around, like, twenty-five acres. Oops. And I just wanted to show two projects of, that we've built before. The one on the left is a fixed, i- is a single-axis tracker in Illinois. And on the right-hand side is a project we built in New York. Okay, and, um, just some benefits of smaller-scale solar is that it will increase local revenue to the county, um, through real estate property taxes and then a voluntary contribution I've made to the county that can go towards a project of your choosing. Also, the, um, solar tends to attract larger development companies like Google or Amazon. They all have net-zero carbon goals at this point, um, so really, if they ever build a new warehouse, it'll need to be with solar. Um, so they're more attracted to places that they know are friendly towards solar development. And with these smaller projects, once they're built, they're really just there. Um, they're visited maybe once a month to check on, like, maintenance and if the system's operating well, but other than that, there's not, like, an increase to traffic. There's no, um, increase in noise. It's, it's just a quiet neighbor that, that sits there. And, um, by interconnecting to the distribution line, there are upgrades that need to be made to the circuit. So it helps improve the reliability of that circuit, so anyone along that, that circuit could benefit from it just being, like, more resilient, um, to brownouts or blackouts. And then, um, we've done a lot of studies in a lot of states on how solar impacts adjacent neighbors. And this is an excerpt from a study we had done with Cone Resonec, an accounting firm, for a project in Illinois. And they looked at, um, homes next to a solar project. They looked at the value before the project was built afterwards, and they compared it to homes down the street, and they found no change in home value after, um, due to solar. And then, um, again, if y'all have questions at any point, feel free to stop me, but Andy is just gonna give, like, a, an overview to the project that will be coming in front of y'all later.
Thank you, Jessie. Um, so we're just gonna start off with a quick, um, oops, maybe. So we're just gonna start off with a quick bird's-eye view of the project located in District Five. Um, site's located off of Route Thirty and Polish Town Road, uh, seated behind Weir Creek Commerce Park and the Henrico County Regional Jail, um, with the correctional substation located at point eight-seven miles from the site. Um, this is just a general overview of our layout plan, just to touch on some of the, uh, main talking points, uh, of our site and, uh, one of the reasons why I picked this site. Um, it's a three-megawatt AC fixed-tilt system. That's a, uh, north, or I'm sorry, an east-to-west orientation. Um, that's about sixty-eight hundred PV panels. Um, the reason why we chose fixed-tilt is because it conforms to the landscape much better than a, um, a tracker system does. Uh, we noticed that New Kent has advised against, um, development on grades of fifteen percent or more. Uh, with the site, we've noticed that there are slopes in excess of twenty percent or more. Uh, and with a fixed-tilt system, the development is able to conform to the landscape and not the other way around. So we will avoid grading on this site and, uh, keep all features onsite as, uh, as is. This will be around for about thirty-five to forty years as well, uh, conforming to all county setbacks. It's fifty feet around the entire property line, um, located sixteen-hundred-and-twenty-five feet from Eltham Road with about twenty-two acres of mature vegetative screening in between, um, and that's in between the site and the existing Weir Creek Commerce. Um, and then, uh, we won't be impacting any wetlands or RPA features onsite. Um, additionally, we had ECS go out and do a, uh, site survey with their delineation with a additional one-hundred-foot cursory review around the project site area with no identified or observed resources. Let's see here. Um, oh, sorry. Currently, we have, uh, four proposed BMPs onsite, um, three drainage areas, one, uh, towards the site's entrance, which is actually divided into two subcatchment areas. Um, currently, as it's, uh, as it's been designed, they are oversized at four hundred, or I'm sorry, four thousand cubic feet per acre. Um, pretty standard is thirty-one hundred, so we're about nine hundred cubic feet over on that. Uh, as Jessie mentioned, there's, uh, minimal traffic. Yes? Sure.
BMP.
Sure.
Um, yesterday, I, I received a memo and guidance from, uh, DEQ.
Yes, we.
Um, regarding, well, stating that solar panels ought to be considered impervious areas when performing post-development water quality calculations. Will this impact your plan, um, your state development?
Um, it, I can't say for certain it will. We will have to go back, and I was actually just talking to Justin about this. We'll have to go back and evaluate our calculations with the new regs, um, and evaluate i- um, if there is any additional, uh, cubic feet needed for detention. Um, like I said, we are oversized at this point, so we may be able to accommodate it with what we have. Um, but based off our, uh, preliminary analysis, we have the room to increase if need be. Um, so we're, we're ready to, you know, to adapt to that challenge if, if need be. Um, as Jessie mentioned, there's minimal site traffic. It's a, through V-DOT calculations, it's two ADT, two average daily traffic vehicles. That is the same as a residential, a single-family residential home. Um, there are no concerns with EMI or EFI interference with this. It conforms to all FCC regulations. Um, and another benefit to this site as being located industrial, um, through clearing the site in preparation, uh, we view this as a industrial placeholder, so the site will be cleared and grubbed, and everything will be ready to go for industrial development to move in down the road. And moving forward, we just have a few, uh, conceptual layout plans with a, um, preliminary, um, rendering model that we did. Uh, on the left showing site access, and then a couple bird's-eye view perspectives of the site and the BMPs, as well as how it's situated within the landscape and the vegetative buffering with proposed landscaping as well. On the right, you'll see, uh, the correctional, or the correction facility seated behind it with vegetative buffering in the front and supplementary to the right near the, um, near the far side. And then, uh, finally, on the right, you'll see a street view from Polish Town Road, and that's the screening existing at three years, um, at the proposed heights for, uh, the conceptual vegetative height. Uh, one of the biggest things that we talked about in, uh, was discussed in the planning commission hearing was the decommissioning plan. Obviously, uh, all the numbers are posted in front of you, but the, the general idea is, um, we'll be returning the site to, um, pre-construction conditions. Obviously, the trees will be, um, removed. However, we will be temporary or permanent seeding, depending on what the future uses of the site coming in behind us. Um, we'll infill all BMPs onsite. Our calculations will be readily available for the impervious, um, so that the next developer moving in behind us knows what they're looking at, um, and against. And, um, as it stands, the, uh, decommissioning plan that was submitted with these plans, um, was calculated at a net present value. However, we will be reevaluating our decommissioning plan on a five-year, uh, in five-year increments, based off of the US Department of Labor statistics to account for any inflation rates that may occur within the meantime in the interim. And then I will pass it back on to Jessie.
Thanks, Andy. We'll, we'll wrap it up quickly so y'all can get to questions. Um, I just wanted to kind of highlight why we chose this parcel, and a big reason was the location, just because it is so far off of Route Thirty-three and, um, can be ve- really well screened with existing vegetation and then proposed vegetation that Andy talked about. And as you can see from the aerial view, there's no surrounding neighbors. Um, to the south is the jail and to the north is the county, county trails, so, um, can be well screened. And then, um, a lot goes into finding a site that could work for solar. It's not easily moved, and, um, not every parcel does work, but other pieces that make this a good property is that there is the distribution lines that are, run along the site. And, um, this site can be used for other uses as well. The solar, um, project will take about twenty-five acres, but there's about a hundred twenty-plus acres that could be used for industrial development, which is of interest to the landowner. Um, and we can talk about that more brief, um, if y'all want. I have a slide on that. But, um, the landowner does still wanna do industrial on the site. He prepped, like, the, uh, western portion to have access off of Route Thirty. Um, he put, uh, building paths there. He cleared the site. Um, he just hasn't been able to find someone for about eight years now in searching for someone. That still remains an opportunity with this solar project. Um, the solar project sited farther away from the site where it's more difficult to access off of the major road. And, um, as Andy mentioned, is on more difficult grading, so. Um, we did also do outreach to neighbors around the parcel. No one, um, attended the meeting, except for the landowner and his partner who, business partner who he asked to join. So I, I haven't heard, um, anything from surrounding neighbors. There were some people at the planning commission that I hadn't heard from before who are neighbors to the twenty-megawatt project, and I'm gonna reach out to them before our next meeting. Um, but other than that, I haven't heard opposition. Okay, uh, that's it, but would love to hear feedback or things you'd like to see from us when we come in front of you later.
All right. Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I have a few questions.
I have a couple.
Go ahead, Mr. Steers.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Steers.
Um. You guys said that these, uh, panels will be in existence for about forty years? And then at the end of the forty years, who's gonna remove the, the panels?
Yeah, that would be the.
Yeah.
That would be the project owner.
The project owner.
But, um, like, for the decommissionable bond, that's the way it's, what they have been to the owner. Uh, the county would have the time to rebuild the project.
What, they would post some kind of performance bond or something? And then when the, uh, panels are removed, where, where do they go?
I think most likely they're gonna be recycled, um.
I was told they cannot be recycled. Did they go to landfills? Is that true?
Today, most panels do go to landfills, um, and are disposed of carefully. But in, we're seeing more recycling programs, and in forty years, there'll be a high demand for recycling, because there's other projects that are being built, um, and, and I, I think we're gonna see a lot of recycling. Um, so that's what I expect, but they can go to landfills as well.
That's so good for the environment.
Well, they're, they're disposed of properly.
Big part?
They're disposed of properly.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, and then during the course of the forty years, you can't go in there and mow, so how do you maintain the grass growing in the property?
So we, we developed the, um, a proprietary, uh, seeding, uh, pollinator mix that is, um, placed in between each rows. So we actually do go in and mow, uh, about four times a year, uh, onsite.
Is there ever anything, like, Roundup used to kill grass?
No chemicals or pollutants are used on site.
And one other question, are you guys funded by the federal government? No funding at all?
No, I mean, um, we can qualify for, like, investment tax credits for solar panels, but that's, I mean, we're, we're a private company.
Okay.
Yeah.
No federal funding?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Ms. Lockwood? Yeah, I'm just, you mentioned that, uh, you're FCC compliant as far as feedback and all that online. Um, we, we did have problems with the other one, and we continue to have problems with the other one. Um, it, I don't know if it was part of your conditional use or not, was, are you to be offline until those issues are resolved? Is that something that you've agreed to?
The way the condition is written is, if there's interference, we'll have a study conducted, and if there, it's confirmed we're interfering, we have sixty days to correct the issue.
And if you don't correct it in sixty days, what happens?
Then I think we'll go offline. I'd have to check back at what the commission reads as.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd like to see that it be your offline until it's resolved, if that hasn't been done already. Um, I'm concerned a little bit, um, this, I've, I've driven by the site and all that. I'm not too worried about, you know, the view from Polish Town Road. I think your screening will probably be adequate for that. I am a little concerned, though, um, adjacent to that property is the Warrani, uh, Natural Park, the, the trail. And you're ki- you're not that far from there, so I'm wondering, is, is this gonna be visible from the trails?
Um, so we had our surveyor and, uh, ECS, our environmental consultant, go out there and, uh, plot points, and based off of the topography of where those points lie on the trail, um, that we've, um, brought back into our model. Um, and the existing vegetation, we do not anticipate the system to be able to be seen from that trail.
Okay. If you, if you would, on your next presentation, if you would include a map that includes the trails?
Of course.
So that we can see proximity to that? That's really all I have for today. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have one other question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the power that's generated from your proposed farm, how much of that is retained by New Kent County?
So it goes directly into the local grid, so the distribution lines, that's what it'll feed into, and then it runs to the substation. Um, so anyone along that circuit could feasibly get the power from the solar project.
In New Kent County?
In New Kent County. Once it goes into the grid, though, um, and it goes to a substation, I mean, it, I can't promise where it's gonna go, but it is feeding directly into the grid, local grid.
But it is possible that no one in New Kent would receive any benefits, right?
I wouldn't, I mean, I wouldn't say no one, the, the county jail is directly across from us. Um, they're feeding into the same circuit we are, so, um, I, I think it's likely. But again, yeah, I, I can't make promises on who's getting the electricity once it goes into the grid.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. I look forward to seeing you at the, uh, May, what, May board meeting?
April.
April, April board meeting. All right.
Great, yeah, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you at the May, what, May board meeting?
April.
April, April board meeting.
Yeah, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Just Hathaway, do we have some other business?
Yes, sir. I do have two items. I'd like to present to you.
All right. The equipment. The equipment that we use at the Route Six Eighteen Refuge Site has recently been malfunctioning and is not usable. It's our excavator. And because we rely so heavily on that equipment for pushing brush and compacting our open bins, we've had to actually lease equipment so we can keep our brush and our operations ongoing at the Route Six Eighteen Refuge Site. That lease amount is currently costing us a little over thirty-two-hundred dollars a month to have that equipment on-site. Our General Services Director has located another piece of equipment, and you have the information in the packet that I've just passed out, that is currently available and on-site for purchase at an amount of one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars total amount. In my proposed FY twenty-three budget, there is a line item for a hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars for the purchase of this new piece of equipment. I am requesting today that we expedite the purchase and not wait to July first to make the purchase and purchase it now, therefore saving us the monthly rental fee, which we estimate if we continue throughout the end of the, this current fiscal year, it'll cost us approximately fifteen-thousand dollars of revenue. I have prepared a motion for you. If you choose to make the purchase now. Again, it is proposed in next year's fiscal year budget, capital budget, and I am requesting that we make the purchase now as opposed to wait to July one.
Anybody have any comments, questions?
Just for him. If we did wait till July, would that possibly delay even getting one?
It could possibly do that. Right now, we're fortunate to have identified a piece of equipment that is on a lot right now. It might not be available in July, so it could possibly delay that.
Is the equipment in Virginia Beach?
Yes, it is.
Three thousand dollars to get it here?
There is a transport fee for that. I believe that is the amount.
I'd have to agree with Mr. Steers. I think that should be negotiated. I'd go get it for half that. I know I can't, but.
If it was coming from California, I can understand it, but Virginia Beach?
Yes, we can definitely negotiate that. And in the motion, too, it's an up-to amount that's stated in the motion, and yes, we will talk to the dealer about that.
What is the line item for other charges, material and logistics? That's another eight thousand dollars roughly. Any idea what the second from the total?
I can get Mr. Stewart to follow up with you on that. He's handled the negotiations with the contractor. And I will say, there's not much we can negotiate on this. I think we can work on the transportation costs, but this is being purchased off of state contracts, so some of these rates are set in pricing. It's that I purchased thing off the state, but I think there's room for the transport, and I can definitely get more details on the other materials.
I think we should move forward instead of wasting money on renting a piece of equipment now.
Yeah, I agree. It could, if it's gone.
And when you're negotiating.
Or down to find it.
Yeah, when you're negotiating the freight charge, let them know that we've got a board member that's willing to do it for half. If you need a little leverage.
That size doesn't even, that size doesn't even take but a duly. It's not to go get it. All right, so is that a motion on? You're gonna give us, Ms. Lockwood?
Mr. Chairman, I move to appropriate one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars from the capital fund balance for the purchase of an excavator for the Route Six Eighteen Refuge Site.
Up to, right?
Up to.
Okay.
If I didn't say that.
Thank you, Ms. Lockwood. Ms. Lockensley, poll the members, please.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page? Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
And the last item I have is really just an update on the Route Sixty Bottoms Bridge traffic study. That came up at our meeting earlier this month to Mr. Nguyen, when the board asked about the status of that study. I mentioned at that meeting that I had seen preliminary results, and I asked them to look at the McDonald's entrance prior to finalizing the study. I do have a final draft of the study, and they have addressed my concerns about the McDonald's entrance. But they've also made some additional changes since we've previously seen the study, which I've shared with the sheriff's office. They're now proposing to turn the majority of the crossings along that Route Sixty corridor to what's called a restricted crossing U-turn, which is an R-cut. What this does is it pretty much eliminates left-turn movements from roads intersecting Route Sixty, meaning that to get out of the Patriots Landing neighborhood, the Five Lakes neighborhood, you'd have to make a right turn and go to the next roundabout to make a U-turn. They've even installed this at the entrance of the VCU Medical Center, where we're adding additional time to the transport of victims and patients in need to get medical treatment. I have some real concerns with the proposed plan, and the sheriff has voiced concerns as well. So we will be having further conversations with VDOT on this matter. I just think it's unnecessary to begin with, but I did want to provide you with an update on the study since it was mentioned at our last meeting.
Mr. Chairman, so this R-cut, it says on our sheet here, also known as super-street intersection, J-turn intersection, reduced-conflict intersection, synchronized-street intersection. And I'd like to add one more stupid. I don't know where these guys come up with, I mean, somebody's getting paid for acronyms, I would imagine, because why don't you just call it a left turn at an intersection and leave things as, it's asinine. It's no different than the proposal they put forward for Eltham. I don't get it. I don't understand where VDOT is coming from these days. I've actually encountered one of these intersections in Chesapeake where you weren't, you're at a left-turn lane that actually sends you a half a block down further past the intersection that you're at, and you make a U-turn without a light to be able to come back to make a right turn for the left turn that you wanted to make. So it's confusing and asinine. I can't think of a better way to describe it. So I would imagine that, you know, just like Eltham, when VDOT comes and puts this proposal forward, they're gonna ask for county funding in order to do some of this. And I would say that's where we put our foot down, if this board agrees. But somebody's gotta do something about VDOT and these engineers that they don't seem to have anything better to do than confuse people with their crazy plans. So I'm sure nothing's gonna get done in the Fifth District now that I've said that, but, you know, it's ridiculous. It's ridiculous.
We know how you've been enjoyed working with VDOT since you've been on the board. Anything else, Mr. Hathaway?
No, thank you.
I would agree with everything you said, Mr. Lockwood. I think we all do. Anybody? Mr. Steers, you have something else?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. If I can pass these out. Several years ago, I was contacted by the president of the New Kent African-American Society, and she expressed to me that they need some site somewhere in the county where they can store their stuff or have their stuff on display, artifacts and all this kind of stuff. And I'm thinking that the property that we just purchased at the, for the fire station is, has a lot of African-American history tied to that property. There used to be the R and D motel, and it was, I found out that the R was for roads and the D was for dillards. So anyway, that was where black people traveling through Virginia, they could stop there, they could sleep, they could get food, they could get gas. And there was a book printed called The Green Book, and it was a guy named Victor Green out of New York, and he was a mail carrier, and he came up with a book to distribute all across the United States where African-American people could go to buy groceries, get a motel room, back during the Jim Crow era and stuff like that. So I'm thinking, I don't think that we're gonna need a huge boardroom at this station or maybe not even a weight room. I don't know. I haven't discussed any of that. I guess I'll see already to see that Mr. O'Pat's not real happy, but if we could have, if we didn't need another boardroom, just have a room there since it ties to that piece of property and have like a mini museum kind of thing for the society. If that's something we could look into.
I think when we go to the design stage, we can look into it when they're designing the.
Okay.
Take the fits in or not?
All right, thank you, sir.
I don't think you meant to send me that.
Oh, yeah. Remember to go pay it. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody have anything else? The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be held at 6:00 PM on Monday, April eleventh, 2022, and the next work session at 9:00 AM on Wednesday, April twenty-seventh, 2022, both in a boardroom with the county administration building. So no other business?
Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Tiller. Ms. Lockensley, poll the members.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page? Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.